All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Temecula City Council meeting. I am going to call this meeting to order. Matthew Yang, hi there, back there. Great job on the prelude music. We're going to start our meeting off with an invocation by Rabbi Yonasson Abrams of Shabbat of Temecula Valley. Rabbi, are you here? Rabbi, good to see you. Shalom. And then we'll have our flag salute. Mr. Anselmo, would you do us the honor of giving the flag salute? Please stand.
Esteemed council members and residents of the city of Temecula, I bring with you greetings and blessings from the man who I represent, Rabbi Horowitz, who everybody in the city knows, unfortunately was diagnosed with ALS over three years ago. He is confined to his eyes, but he still inspires people with his writings, as well as greetings and blessings from the rabbi who he represents, which is the Lubavitcher Rabbi, back from Brooklyn, New York. In exactly a week and a couple of days is the holiday of Passover, which is the holiday of freedom for the Jewish people. And I would like to give a blessing to the city council as well as to the entire city, and that is the blessing of freedom. Passover is the holiday of freedom when the Jews were set free from the Egyptian slavery for over 200 years. And as Americans, we know that freedom is something that doesn't come for free. Freedom is something that you pay a heavy price for. And specifically, the blessing that I give the entire city of Temecula with this blessing of freedom is actually brought about through the city council. The blessing of freedom, and the Jewish freedom, comes from the giving of the Torah, which was just a few weeks, seven weeks to be exact, after Passover. And the purpose of our freedom is in order to serve God. And the Jewish people serve God by fulfilling all of the 613 commandments which God gave to us. And at the same time that God gave these commandments to the Jewish people, there were seven commandments that were given to the entire world, which I've enumerated before. They are number one, to believe in God; number two, not to curse God; number three, not to kill; number four, not to steal; number five, not to commit adultery; number six, to treat animals nicely; and number seven, to enforce all of these laws, which is the job of the city council, as well as all of the wonderful service members that we have here. And with this blessing of freedom that comes about through everybody doing their part, God will bless us with the ultimate freedom so that we can live with prosperity and security. And let us all say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Rabbi. Mark Anselmo, if you can come on up to the podium. Thought you were going to sneak by from the back row, huh?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless you. You can be seated. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Comitjaro.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember McCracken.
Here and ready.
Councilmember Ron.
I'm here.
And Mayor Nigar.
The mayor is in the house. We are going to move to presentations and proclamations, but before I do that, I see a number of students in the audience. So, as what's kind of becoming a tradition here, can I see all the Pumas? Do I have Pumas here tonight? There's a few.
One.
I think there's one Puma in the house. Okay, golden bears. All right, golden bears. Okay, wolf pack?
Ooh.
No wolf pack here. Okay, looks like golden bears rule the house tonight. Well done. Everybody's welcome, including you in the back there.
Puma.
Miss Puma. All right. All right, this is the time for presentations and proclamations. And I'm going to call on the help of Mayor Protem Edwards, and we're going to celebrate National Crime Victims Rights Week. And who do we have representing that, Madam City Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I believe Michael Cabral is here for that.
Good evening. If you would assist me, I'm going to read the proclamation. The City of Temecula Proclamation. You know, let me get my glasses out. That's okay. Nice haircut. Thank you. Okay, all right. City of Temecula Proclamation. Whereas Americans are the victims of over 20 million crimes each year, crime can touch the life of anyone regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration, or economic status. And whereas many victims face challenges finding appropriate services, and many communities feel disconnected from the justice and social response systems, and have lost trust in the ability of those systems to recognize them and respond to their needs. And whereas victims of repeat crimes who fail to receive supportive services are at a greater risk for long-term consequences of crime. Whereas the victim services community has worked for decades to create an environment for victims that is safe, supportive, and effective. And whereas early intervention with services that support and empower victims provides a pathway to recovery from crime and abuse. And whereas honoring the rights of victims, including the right to be heard and treated with fairness, dignity, and respect, and working to meet their needs rebuilds their trust in the criminal justice and social service systems. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week is an opportunity to commit to ensuring that all victims of crime are offered accessible and appropriate services in the aftermath of a crime. Now therefore, I, Michael S. Nigar, on behalf of the city council, of the city of Temecula, do hereby proclaim April 10th through April 16th, 2016, to be National Crime Victims Rights Week, and express our sincere gratitude to community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you very much. On behalf of District Attorney Mike Hestron and all the staff of the Riverside County District Attorney's Office, as well as crime victims not only in the county but throughout the nation, I thank you, and I'd urge you all to join us tomorrow for a candlelight vigil at 7:00 PM at Harvest and Lake Park in celebration and recognition of crime victims throughout the county.
And thank you. And let us, if you could, communicate to District Attorney Hestron. We appreciate his efforts in this area, and we will make a showing tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Well, is Ms. Isabella Peña in the audience? Ms. Isabella, can you come on down? You know, we have a number of distinguished Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts in the city of Temecula, and it's always an honor of the city council to recognize the highest award that can be achieved by both the Girl Scouts and the Boy Scouts. Boy Scouts being the Eagle Scouts, but the highest award that can be achieved via the Girl Scouts is called the Girl Scout Gold Award. And it's our honor, Isabella, to publicly congratulate you. And I'm going to read your certificate, and then Mayor Protem Edwards has a little something for you. The City of Temecula Certificate of Achievement. The city council of the city of Temecula commends the outstanding achievement of Isabella Peña, of troop number 1299. We congratulate Isabella for receiving the Girl Scout Gold Award, which is the highest achievement earned in Girl Scouting. We are proud of Isabella's accomplishment and wish her continued success in her promising and bright future. Signed by me and the city clerk. Ms. Vice Mayor, if you would take that down to Isabella, and you have a little something for her, don't you?
I do. We know how hard you have worked to achieve this goal, and so the city of Temecula has for you a pin that was actually commissioned the year that I was mayor, which is, last time, was 2014. And you'll notice it's silver, and it's our 25th anniversary, city anniversary pin. And there is a limited number of these pins, so after they're gone, they're gone. And you also notice that it has a little bling right there in it, right? So, on behalf of the city council and the city of Temecula, we want to congratulate you on your achievement, and we're very, very proud of you.
Thank you.
Now, before you go away, we're going to put you on the spot a little bit and ask you what your community service project was to reach the Gold Award.
Okay.
And if you can pull that microphone a little closer.
For my Gold Award project, I installed the hydration station, or water bottle filling station, in the lobby of the gym at my school, Temecula Valley High School. I'm soon to be the vice president of ASB, and also on varsity basketball, so I'm constantly in the gym. Because of the installation of the hydration station, I have reduced waste on campus and have prevented the use of over 5,000 plastic water bottles. Because the hydration station has been so successful, the PGSAs contacted me and is planning on installing more stations all throughout my campus and at the middle schools. I want to thank you for recognizing me on behalf of my project. I appreciate you for giving me the opportunity to be here this evening.
Well, congratulations to you. Now, who have you brought with you in the audience?
My grandmother and my grandfather.
Come on up. Now's your time to take pictures. Come on, Grandma and Grandpa, now's your time to take some pictures.
Of course.
Come on up.
Mr. Chris and Mr. Jim.
Sure. What a pleasure to see you in our chamber.
Yes, 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 yes.
Forty-one years we've lived here.
Yes, you have.
It was born here. And thank you, all of you, city council, for all the hard work you continue to do for this beautiful city.
Well, you're very kind. Back at you. You might also want to get a photo of the screen behind you. That's always a favorite. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, to our last presentation, is General Manager of Rancho California Water District, Jeff Armstrong here. Hi, Jeff. We're going to have a brief presentation by Jeff Armstrong. Jeff is the general manager of our local water company, Rancho California Water District. Jeff, welcome.
Good evening. I'd also like to introduce one of our board members who is here as well, Jack Hoagland. So, thank you very much for some time this evening. As you know, we've been in a drought here, and I really felt that the last year. And so what we wanted to do tonight is just give a quick update on the status of the drought, how the community is doing, and just talk about one little thing that all the customers of Rancho California Water District might want to take advantage of to help them. So, I'll try to be real brief here. So, related to the drought, last year, our reservoirs were near empty, and the Sierra Nevadas had dirt, no snow. And so this year, we had El Niño, and we had some improved conditions, actually, from last year. This slide on the right of this shows all the major reservoirs in the state water system, and you can kind of see by the charts for each one of those how full each one of those are. The two on the top, Shasta and Lake Orville, are two that you get a lot of press on and media coverage about, and those are really full compared to how they were last year. They were almost empty. But you can see the rest of the reservoirs aren't quite as good as that. And if you look overall, the reservoirs right now currently are about 65% full as of today. Normally, they'd be about 76% full at this time of year. So, we're still in improved conditions, but still lower than what we normally are. The Sierra snowpack is at about 81%. The Colorado River is at 95%. The basin there with the snowpack, that all, of course, melts and runs into the Colorado River, which we get water from here in Southern California. Diamond Valley Lake is about 38% full. And then here locally, we have groundwater, and we need rainfall here to recharge our groundwater basin. And our average rainfall, we're about 70% of that here. So, the point of this is that while things have gotten better, we're still not quite back to even normal yet. So, you know, we still need to be efficient, still going to be needing to look at this as we go through the summertime. There's been a lot of efforts this last year within the community. Rancho Water District has had numerous, we've probably quadrupled the amount of events that we've been out at, and just really trying to get out to the community and talk to our customers and let them know what they need to do. And the city of Temecula's done a great job as well, and your staff is wonderful, and council members have also really helped. And one of those events was actually a water summit held here at the city that Councilmember Ron facilitated and organized, and you had elected officials from cities, county, the state, federal officials. You had water leaders, you had stakeholders in the community, and all came together for a day. It was really well attended and talked about what could be done here locally to help with the drought. So, we appreciate that effort. There's been a lot of programs to help. There's been turf removal. You've seen a lot of turf that's been taken out of, whether it's residential or even in commercial areas, plant conversion to more plant types that are friendly to the climate that we have here, and some conversions to recycled water. And I just want to show you a couple of examples. So, you see a lot of the streetscape kind of changing from parkways that were turf to now California-friendly type of landscape and on drip systems. And when we look at some of those accounts, what we see is about a 70% water savings from those conversions. So, these conversions really do help make a difference in conserving our water. This is a picture of Meadowview Clubhouse, and you can see on the left all the turf that they had there in that area. They've removed all of that, and they planted California-friendly landscape on that hillside. You can't really see it right now because the plants are really small, but next year at this time, it's going to be really colorful and full. The other thing that happened here is not only did we remove some turf, but put in, converted the whole system from potable drinking water to recycled water as well. And there's a number of these conversions that are taking place within the city as well. So, last April, the governor issued an executive order mandating 25% water use reduction within the state. Rancho California Water District, we're in an area that had a higher target, was 36%. And I want to show you how we've done. Our customers in Rancho California Water District, which includes the city of Temecula, parts of Marietta, the wine country, Duluth, achieved a 28.4% water savings since June of last year through February. And that's more than the 25%, which I think is a pretty incredible number and quite an achievement. It's less than the target, but I think the target was really somewhat unattainable. But this is incredible, and it's really one of the main reasons we wanted to come here tonight, is just to thank the city and to thank the customers for doing this. It's really remarkable. And if you compare our community to the communities to the north, south, and east of us, you can see how we've done compared to some of those. And this community has really stepped up and done a great job of being water efficient and conserving water. So, sort of the bad news is that with the conditions, the mandate still is in place and was extended through October of 2016. However, the State Water Resource Control Board did relax a few of the requirements, and so our target is now down to 32%. We're still not, still above our 28%, so there's still going to be water-efficient measures that need to take place. The board will again in May look at the conditions of the supply within the state, and they may do something else. And so we'll monitor that and adjust as necessary. So, one of the things I want to do is point out a tool that we have available to all of our customers, and I would encourage everybody to take advantage of this. We call it My Water Tracker. It allows you on a daily basis to log into your account on our website, bring up your specific account, and see how much water you've used through that billing period on a day-to-day basis. It's real time. You don't have to walk out to your meter. You can just look at it right on your computer. You can compare how your water use is compared to what your budget is. And so it really helps you stay efficient and know where you're at and how you can control your water bill. You can also get text alerts on that, so as your use kind of approaches your budget, you can get alert to let you know that you're getting close. And then, within the next month, there will be some new features. You can get hourly water use information for your account for seven, for the past seven days when you look at your account. And you also get some text alerts for rain events and potential leaks. And this is just a quick snapshot of what it looks like. The main thing here is that when you log on, it's your account. This blue line represents your actual water use, and the green line represents your budget. So, this customer is well under their budget, and then you can see how it's projected to go for the rest of the month. So, it's a great tool to follow along with. I just want to give you an example of a customer that called. This is how powerful some of this data and this information is. We had a customer call, and he said, you know, "I've been doing everything to conserve water, but my water bill is still really high. What's going on?" And so he actually called me, and I talked to him. And when he called, it was in the middle of the month, right at this point, and these bars down here represent the amount of water use every day. And so you can see, using a lot of water, using no water, a lot of water, no water. So, I said, "Well, it looks like you're using your sprinklers every other day." And he said, "Yep, that's what I'm doing." So, I clicked on one of the days, this day, and up came the hourly information. So, this is midnight. So, I said, "Well, it looks like at midnight, your sprinklers go on. At 1:00 AM, they're going on. At 2:00 AM, they're kind of going off. And then at 3:00 AM, they're going on again," and going through the whole cycle twice. And he said, "No, I got my sprinkler set just once." And he said, "Well, let me go check." He walked out to his garage, he checked, he came back, and he said, "Sure enough, the things are going off twice. I didn't know." And so he was using twice as much water as he needed to. And you can see after that phone call, what his water, oops, what happened to his water use, it dropped in half. And so this is, didn't change his lifestyle. It resulted in half of a water bill than what he was paying. Didn't have to do anything different, and this is just information. And I like to say, "This is a lot cheaper than towing an iceberg down from Alaska to provide you water." It's just, it's there, and it's simple, and would really encourage people to take advantage of this and look at it. This is his My Water Tracker, and you can see the green bars is budget, and how he was going way up over budget, and then he made the correction, and then through the rest of the month, he almost got right back down to the budget. So, this information can really help you save money and be water efficient and help out. So, this tool, we've had over 200,000 visits to this and looks at this since we launched it in July. And the end of March, the White House had a drought summit, and there were seven water districts in California. We were one of them with My Water Tracker that was recognized in their paper for innovation. And so we're really proud of it. It's a real great tool that not many water districts have, so I'm hoping everybody here that's listening will log on tonight and sign up and take advantage of it. And the last thing I just want to say is just, please, keep up the great, great efforts. It's been a wonderful result, and appreciate the tremendous effort that everybody in the community has made.
Thank you for a good presentation. Any questions from my colleagues?
No, we just love that Water Tracker so.
Councilmember Ron.
Oh, just a quick comment. I just got an email yesterday from Justin in your office asking about the continued interest in developing a community garden, demonstration garden for drought, and technologies and so forth. And I'll be talking to the city manager's office about that, but yeah, that was one of the recommendations that came out of the water summit last year, and definitely still interested in seeing that move forward if we can. So, look forward to reaching out to you guys.
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and give your, give our regards to your board.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye. We'll move on to our next item, the public comment portion of the meeting. Madam City Clerk, do we have public comments?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
And are any of those comments on the consent calendar?
No, they are all on general public comments.
Okay. So, seeing that we have public comments, there's rules that we have to read. The rules are boring, but we have to read them, so I'm going to go ahead and do that. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items, which we do have at the end of the agenda, the request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. On those items, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Madam City Clerk, can you call the first speaker?
Mr. Mayor, the first speaker is Steve Rubin, to be followed by Mark Anselmo.
Mr. Rubin, it looks like you brought your gang with you.
We've got a contingent, yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Nigar and the city council for allowing us to speak to you tonight. My name is Steve Rubin. This is Waco merchant, marine veteran. We are a nonprofit here in the city of Temecula. We work with service members or veterans that have service-related injuries through the platform of scuba diving and the therapeutic values of water. We would like to thank the city of Temecula and the city council for your continued support of our organization. In World War II, which, there was a tradition that was started that we know as a challenge coin or a command coin, and it was started with the World War II pilots, and they used to use that coin for a good luck charm, and it became to where they were able to identify themselves if they got shot down by, behind enemy lines as a, to the Allied forces. So, we have adopted that coin, and we would like to present the city council with that coin tonight.
Thank you.
To each one of you, if we could may approach and give that to you.
Yes, please. If you would just go ahead and approach the city clerk, she'll make sure we get him. Okay. Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you very much. So, if I'm found in Menifee, all I got to do is show the coin?
Sure. And we'll let you back into Temecula.
We'll come get you.
Okay.
All right, all right.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Go ahead. While you're here, though, tell us a little bit about your nonprofit, because I think it's fascinating.
Yes, again, we work with veterans that are, have either been injured with an apputation, a paraplegic, or a spinal cord injury, PTSD, and traumatic brain. Scuba diving underwater facilitates and helps rehabilitate these veterans. So, Johns Hopkins about two years ago, three years ago, did a study that they showed four days in the water, paraplegic would get as much benefit as six to 12 months of task rehabilitation, and all veterans that participated that had PTSD issues showed up to 80% reduction in PTSD. So, we just have a lot of fun. We have our veterans and our volunteers here to thank you again for your support.
Steve, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
How is it for a disabled vet, some of them who've lost limbs or spinal cord injuries, to get in the water and to trust putting on that mask and that snorkel and going under without being able to use some or all of their limbs? What's your experience with that? How is that when that first occurs?
It's incredible how they do, how they will trust us to take them underwater. We spend at least eight, 10 hours in the pool with them before we ever take them out to the ocean. So, we've gained a little bit of credibility with them of getting them in the water, getting them properly weighted to where they are, they have a positive position in the water, and it's just a transition. So, we spend eight hours in a classroom, eight to 10 hours in the pool, and then we get them out in the ocean, and they have a ball.
What, Ms. Vice Mayor wants to know, what pool do you use?
Marietta Mesa High School.
Very good. You know, I choked earlier, but I don't want to make light of it. The coins that you're presenting us with are very valuable, and thank you for giving them to us, and that'll find a special place on all of our desks.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Mayor, if I may?
Yes. Councilmember McCracken.
You spoke of the veteran, the benefits from this program. Speak to the buddy system, how you have someone to go with a veteran and together.
Yeah, that's a great question. When we first decided what we wanted to do, there was two things that we found out that there was a lack. And one was is that certain organizations only recognize post-9/11 veterans. We do not discriminate against any campaign. The other thing was, is that the veteran always, or seeing that a lot of organizations, veterans got the benefit. Well, diving being a buddy sport, we encourage the spouse, or child, nephew, somebody that that veteran served with to become a part of the organization. So, we not only train the veteran, but a buddy of their choice so they can continue on the sport.
And the benefit of that is the founding member or the friend has a chance to be a part of that veteran's recovery. Sometimes you feel like you're... Sometimes you feel like you're, you're helpless because they're going through things, you don't know how to help them. But this program is something they can work together, work through, and in the end, they feel like they've accomplished something together. So it's awesome.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Two more things. Um, Jack, if you can put this on the table here so our, our, our friends at home can see it, right there in between those dots. Each side, and that way we can zoom in on it at home. And then, um, right there.
Right around there.
There you go. And, uh, one last thing, Steve. If anybody wants to contribute or lend a hand to you, how would they do that?
Wavesproject.org.
Again?
Our, our website, wavesproject.org.
Okay. And do we got a good view of the coins there at home? I think so. Wavesproject.org doing a great job and certainly fits in line with the, uh, with what the council has decided is priorities to support. Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next speaker, please. Madam City Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Mark Anselmo to be followed by Lynn Pennick.
Always a pleasure to see Mark and Nicholas Anselmo here. Hi, Nick.
Hi.
I'm Mark Anselmo. This is Nicholas Anselmo of our Nicholas Foundation. Just wanted to take a few minutes to thank you from the bottom of our hearts for the last 11 years that we've been able to work with the city. Um, I've got a little team coming here, Ava and Betsy.
Hello. I'm an autistic.
So that would be autism, so that you know. Wait one second. Ava and Betsy gave us all of your sizes and so we want to thank every one of you that's up here with, uh, an ONF jacket swag.
Hi, Nicholas Anselmo.
And that's the least we could do for you. Um, we've come a long way being a volunteer organization for the last 11 years and without the city, we wouldn't have been able to do it.
Yep, bye-bye.
And this is DJ Nick.
Hi.
Hi.
All right. So there you go. Go with mama.
That apple didn't fall far from the tree.
So, so anyway, uh, we'll keep it to a minimum. We hope you enjoy the jackets. This is Nathan, another young man, um, on the spectrum and his wonderful parents, uh, they're the ones actually created these jackets for us. So, um, from Kevin with community service, from the city council as a whole, we've known each other for a long time, um, from Aaron and, and the whole crew. It's just, this city is blessed to have all of you, uh, in our corner and to be able to provide the services that you do. Um, we wouldn't have been able to do what we've done without you. And so we just wanted to say a heartfelt thanks. Seeing as it's Autism Awareness Month, we thought it was appropriate to come in and thank you for lighting up the city hall blue as we've done now for the past couple of years and just the partnership with the special needs swim classes and just, I, I could go on for hours, but I have three minutes, so I won't. So, um, I just want to thank all of you for everything that you've done for us and we appreciate it, so.
Any comments?
Mark, I can't miss the opportunity to talk about your wife for a minute because I love to say this, it's such a great story. She's in the back there. She took Nicholas, uh, uh, out, outside. But, um, when I first met your wife Kathy, she was Kathy Summers then, uh, and she was my son Alex's kindergarten teacher. And he's 29 now and has two beautiful daughters of his own. So, uh, you know, we all get around this community and we all meet up again. So, uh, it's great. You do great work, Mark. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for being our partner for so long.
And I'll never stop telling the story, um, that when my son was diagnosed with autism, uh, if it was not for you, I probably would have resigned from the city council. Um, but with your support, um, and the support of our Nicholas, um, we've turned, uh, what looks like tragedy into something that has just been so magnificent, I cannot even begin to explain it. And, uh, it's just been wonderful. What a journey. So really thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I remember when we first met and you said, I have something I want to talk to you about. And you were, said, we're thinking about starting this organization. What do you think? And I said, I think it's something that we really need. And how many years later?
Yeah, eleven.
Eleven years later. And it really has changed the thinking of an entire community. It really has. And with, uh, Mayor Nigar's help, uh, in, in bringing the autism, the families who've been touched by autism out into the open, it's blessed everyone. It's blessed the public for getting to know them and I think it's blessed the families for being able to show, uh, how wonderful they are.
Thank you. Well, we're blessed to be here, so thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Lynn Pennick to be followed by Mark Caton.
Hi. How do you say your last name? Pennock? Pennick. A pleasure, Ms. Pennick.
It's a pleasure to be here again with you, Mayor, and city council members and the mayor. I've got a couple documents here that I wanted to invite you guys to. And, um, it is our annual Temecula Valley Helping Hands, um, Community Day of Service this coming Saturday, the 16th. And we will be, um, putting together hygiene kits for, um, mostly our partners in the city, the Temecula Pantry, the Mission of Hope, and Martha's Pantry, and the Senior Center. And we've made it to a fabulous, um, a community event. And so it's going to be in a lot of different locations, like French Valley Elementary and a few of the Mormon churches and the Crossroads Church down on Inez. So we've really made it like a big community event and want to invite all of you and, um, just the community to participate in that. And we're hoping to assemble 10,000 kits. So there's 12 locations, so we're hoping to do 1,000 at each location.
So that's this Saturday?
This Saturday. And there's, um, it's mostly from eight to 10. Some of the locations are nine to 11. The best thing that you can do is go on the website. It's called JustServe.org and you will see all the, the locations right there. You just put in, um, you can just put in even just the local zip code 92592 and they'll pop up, 12 of them, and you can just go to any of those locations. And you're welcome to bring items, but we'll have a lot of items there to, um, put together all the kits.
You do this every year, don't you?
We do do it every year. We do something different every year and, and now we're really focusing on our community and what our community could use. And so in the past, you know, we've done a lot of things to, um, help spruce up the community, different locales. And now we're really kind of focusing on what the community could use, like different, you know, just really trying to stick with the community.
Awesome. What's that website again?
It's JustServe.org.
JustServe.org.
Correct.
Beautiful.
It's super easy to get onto. Okay. Thanks so much for your time.
You're very welcome. Thank you. And our next speaker.
Our last speaker is Mark Caton.
Uh, we've got the video that, uh, we really wanted to, uh, have for everybody to see and I'm pleased to, to see that we got it. That's fantastic. Um, I got to tell you that working with the city is just amazing. Um, the, from the mayor down, council members to staff, you guys really pull it all together. Everything we asked for, we're able to get. It's just so nice to be able to support the kids of Temecula and that's all we're here for is to, you know, help the, help the kids get, uh, you know, some funds that they've lost out on. And, uh, so we want to just keep fighting and keep bringing it. I was miss, I misspoke two weeks ago, which our, our board was, uh, quick to mention. I, I had said we'd raised $200,000. It's so far $100,000, so, in the five years. So this year should be a terrific year. We have been guaranteed great weather and we checked with Fritz from Channel 4 and yes. Uh, so we're going to have great weather and it should be a wonderful event. And with that, hopefully we can do the video. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to play the video too. I really appreciate it.
So Mark, let's go over the event again. It is when?
April 29th and 30th. Um, on the 29th, we are, uh, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. And, uh, that's when we're featuring, uh, Another Journey, which is, uh, they say the world's greatest, uh, Journey cover band. And they are amazing. It's just like hearing Journey. So I think you'll like them. Uh, that'll be, um, with the VIP dinner, which we still have some seats available for the VIP dinner. And then the following day, it's just a traditional taste. Um, but even Friday, we'll have full taste. Every vendor is available both Friday and Saturday. Um, but we do have that additional piece, so, uh, we'd just love to have as many people as possible come out.
Well, Mark, it's becoming a signature event here, uh, and we're looking forward to it every year. Think you're going to have a great event.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the support.
Thank you. Appreciate it. It's that time, uh, in our, uh, meeting to go to city council reports. I don't see anybody in the queue. Button pressers, anyone? Councilmember McCracken.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'll just make this short and brief. Uh, last Saturday, I participated for the first time in Reality Rally. I've seen it from the sidelines, uh, as a commissioner. But this year, it was amazing to see so many people coming to Temecula and enjoy themselves. Hats off to, uh, Jillian Larson. And I have to say, as a city, for the first time, my colleague, Matt Brown, and I participated and Superman over there in the corner, Mr. Brown. It was a great event, so just, good job.
Thanks for doing it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You forgot to mention, we took second place, though. It's not bad.
I hope you would piggyback on me. Go ahead.
I know. Well, Lake Elsinore took first place, I'm sorry to say, but we missed it by 30 seconds. Next year.
Next year. Councilmember Ron, show him your game face.
If he'd had a game face, he'd have finished 30 seconds sooner. Exactly. I can show you my poker face. That's as much as you're going to get.
And we had a community service team as well.
Yes, we did.
I think we're, are we still waiting for them to come across the finish line or?
Zach, you were on that team, right? How, how'd that go?
I think they had a get to the head of the line pass because there's no way they beat us. And we come home and they did. Chief Brown must have carried them the whole way.
You think that's it? You know that the community service, uh, committee can't finish in front of the city council. You know that, don't you?
Well, we of course know that.
Yeah, okay, okay. Very good. No, Chief Brown, good job out there. Seeing there's no other comments, I do have, uh, I, I do want to echo a couple of things. Jillian Larson, uh, who put on the Reality Rally, she did a great job. There was a good vibe on Saturday morning. Lot of people came down, lot of fun. And then I asked, uh, do we have the slide I asked to put up on Circus Vargas? Is it, is it there back there, Jonathan? Can you put it up?
I think he's saying no.
You don't have it? Oh, okay. All right. Well, maybe he's looking for it. I just want to give a shout out to Circus Vargas. Um, you say why, Mike? Uh, you know, every year they come into town and for the third or fourth year in a row, they give away hundreds of tickets to the special needs community, to, to a lot of folks that otherwise could not afford to go. And we're not just not talking about one or two tickets here. You get families of four or five, um, where it would cost you over a hundred dollars to get in to admission. Lot of people got to go to the circus with, without having to pay. Lot of happy faces. Good circus. Um, the way that we can show our love back is that those that didn't get free tickets, great circus. Go, go patronize them. Um, there's no animals. It's all acrobatics and antics and things like that. And so, uh, it's a good circus and, uh, they'll be here through the 18th, I'm told. And you know what? They participated in the Reality Rally. They were here, go figure. They were actually outperforming for the Reality Rally. So that was kind of cool. They come into town.
Eighteen of them got out of one tiny little car?
Yep. You got it. That's right. No, but they come into town and they just follow the flow of the whole community. Um, with that, we'll move to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. One, waive reading of standard ordinance and resolutions. Two, approve the action minutes of March 22nd, 2016. Three, approve the list of demands that checks the city rights. Four, approve the city treasurer's report as of February 29th, 2016. Five, adopt ordinance 16-03, amending section 10.28.010D of the Temecula Municipal Code regarding permafasis speed limits on certain streets. This is a second reading. Six, authorize the submittal of an application for the Cal Recycle Beverage Container Recycling City/County Payment Program. And last on the consent calendar, uh, calendar is item seven, approve the First Amendment to the agreement with MDG Associates for the provision of community development block grant administration services. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second. That was moved by Councilmember Comachero and seconded by Councilmember McCracken. Again, since these are routine, we take them all with one vote. And it looks like the consent calendar passes 5-0. At this time, I'm going to recess the Temecula City Council meeting and turn the gavel over to President Jeff Comachero of the Temecula Community Service District.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula Community Services District to order. Madam Clerk, we are all here this evening. Do we have any public comment under this section? So we'll dispense then with the reading of the rules. Uh, under consent calendar, we have a couple of items. Item eight, approve the action minutes of March 22nd, 2016. Item nine, approve annual agreements and amendments for services for various community services, department events, classes, programs, and activities for fiscal year 2016-17. Item 10, approve the First Amendment to the agreement with Diamond Environmental Services LLC for rental of light towers, generators, and portable restrooms for fiscal year 2015-16. And item 11, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for the special needs playground, PW 12-02.
Move consent. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nigar, seconded by Mr. McCracken. Please cast your votes. And that motion does carry unanimously. Mr. Director, report tonight.
Mr. President, I, yes, I do. I think I have a, yes. Just a reminder that on Saturday, April 23rd, we're hosting the 8th Annual Temecula Special Games. That's going to be from 9:30 to 1:00 PM and that's at Great Oak High School at the football from 9:30 to 1:00 p.m., and that's at Great Oak High School at the football stadium there. The events will include the opening ceremonies, non-competitive games, and sports activities, lunch, and an awards ceremony. And, you know, I was just thinking, it was about three years ago when I was first hired, that's the first event that I attended. Mr. Mayor, I actually met you there. And, you know, I went down there, and the staff was just tremendous, the participants, so much energy. And I remember going home and telling my family that I think I found my spot. I think I found home. And I haven't changed my opinion since. So, for those who are interested, you know, I just encourage you to just come on out. We expect about 100 athletes, about 200 volunteers, and we're still accepting registrations. So, please, visit temeculaevents.org or call 951-240-4268 for more information. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. It's been a good match.
Yes.
Mr. Adams, do we have a general manager's report?
Mr. President, just one item. It was about two weeks ago where the city of Temecula was fortunate and honored to be host to Staff Sergeant Carden's memorial services here on the steps of City Hall. And it wasn't enough. You know, I think I kind of came, we all came away with that. It wasn't enough, but it was, it was something that we could do. And I couldn't have been more proud of the effort that went on with the staff, community services, numerous departments. I think the true heart of this community showed through. Hundreds of, if not thousands of people came to pay their respects, and just wanted to acknowledge the work that went on behind the scenes to put that together.
Thank you, Aaron. Any additional comments from our directors? Seeing none, we will entertain a motion to adjourn to the next meeting of April 26th.
So moved.
Second.
Of a motion and a second, please cast your votes. Okay, don't cast your votes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any again? Will stand adjourned.
At this time, I'm going to convene the Temecula Public Financing Authority. Madam Chair, let the record, or rather, Madam Clerk, let the record reflect that all directors are present. Do we have any public comments? Okay, then we'll go to the consent calendar. It looks like we have one item on consent. Let's approve the action minutes of March 22nd, 2016. Can I get a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Vice Mayor Edwards, seconded by Councilmember Carmichael. Please cast your votes. And that passes 5-0. Temecula Public Financing Authority Executive Director, you don't have a report, do you?
Nothing further.
Okay. Any board of directors? Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The TPFA is adjourned. Now, let's see here, we're going to convene the six, no, we're not. We're going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, move to the public hearing portion of the meeting. I'll read the rules. Any person may submit written comments to the Temecula City Council before a public hearing, or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, or with written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. Item 13, adopt an interim urgency ordinance for a citywide moratorium on the establishment of any new or modification to an existing conditional use permit for the manufacturing of alcohol with retail sales or a tasting room. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, before you tonight is an interim urgency ordinance that would impose a citywide moratorium on the approval of new or modifications to existing conditional use permits for alcohol manufacturing businesses with onsite retail sales and/or a tasting room. In recent months, staff has received preliminary requests from five microbreweries within the city to amend their CUPs to allow for extended hours of operation in the tasting room, live entertainment, increase above the 15% maximum floor area ratio for tasting rooms, and for outdoor patio seating. Many of the requested items, such as the increase in floor area ratio and area of the tasting room and the outdoor patio, are not allowed under the municipal code. Staff recognizes that microbreweries are a growing and unique business, an industry that presents an economic development opportunity for the city, and based on that recognition, staff has begun a planning effort to look at the merits of code changes to potentially accommodate those microbrewery requests. At the March 16th, 2016 Planning Commission meeting, staff sought preliminary Planning Commission comments on the proposed expansion and addition of uses to existing and/or future microbrewery that require conditional use permits. Because of the interest from the microbreweries, the Planning Commission considered and discussed the breweries' requests and determined that there are considerable questions that need to be reviewed and analyzed to determine the merit of making changes to the code. Some of the items cited by the Planning Commission include best practices in other communities, security arrangements, parking requirements, land use compatibility, and a number of others. After a thorough discussion, the Planning Commission directed staff to continue researching this item and to return with potential policy recommendations for them, the Planning Commission, and the city council to consider. So, why is a moratorium necessary? The city has already received one application from a microbrewery to amend their CUP to allow for the expansion of tasting room, of their tasting room and the extension of hours of operation. This item was considered by the Planning Commission and continued in order to allow staff time to complete the planning effort. It is imperative that a moratorium be established to provide staff appropriate time to analyze and address all pertinent issues associated with these uses in order to avoid any and all adverse effects on public health and safety. Additionally, when the current code was drafted, it did not contemplate the unique nature of the microbrewery industry, and as such, the code does not provide for specific development standards that would assure that these businesses are regulated uniformly across the city. While microbreweries and similar uses are unique businesses with potential economic development potential, sufficient and reasonable time is needed to study appropriate policies in order to prevent negative impacts on city residents, businesses, and visitors. So, what does the interim ordinance do? The proposed interim ordinance enacts a moratorium on the establishment of new CUPs and the expansion or amendment of an existing CUP for the manufacture of alcohol with onsite retail sales or a tasting room. If adopted, the city would not accept or process any new or pending application for any permit, license, or other entitlement for the establishment, or amendment of any CUP for the manufacture of alcohol with a tasting room or onsite retail sales. The moratorium does not affect current operations of any previously approved or currently operating manufacturing business with onsite retail sales or tasting room. The proposed moratorium would not prevent a new alcohol manufacturing business that does not include retail sales or tasting room from being established. In other words, new breweries that do not sell their product onsite or have a tasting room would not be subject to this moratorium. The interim ordinance expires 45 days after the date of adoption, unless extended by the city council. Additionally, at least 10 days prior to the expiration of any extension of the ordinance, staff will provide a written report describing the measures taken to alleviate the conditions that led to the adoption of the moratorium in the first place. Staff will continue research best practices for regulating the manufacturing of alcohol with onsite retail sales and tasting rooms, and return to the Planning Commission and the city council with policy recommendations that apply a consistent set of standards for the various issues associated with these issues. Therefore, staff has recommended the city council adopt an interim ordinance for a citywide moratorium on the establishment of any new or a modification to an existing conditional use permit for the manufacture of alcohol with onsite retail sales and/or a tasting room. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Questions? I see Councilmember Carmichael.
Just, I want to make sure that I'm clear, because obviously, moratoriums are a pretty serious thing, and we don't entertain them very lightly. In this particular case, if I understand correctly, we've got several alcohol-producing businesses that want to go beyond that which is currently allowed based on their entitlements, and we don't have a mechanism by which to consider them, so they would be denied at this point because we have no authorization to approve. Is that, that a fair statement?
That's correct for some of the items that are being requested, but the extension of hours is an item that isn't explicitly prohibited in the code, so that would be an item that would, could, come before the Planning Commission for consideration.
Even if we instituted a moratorium?
No, not if we instituted a moratorium. So, if we instituted a moratorium, we wouldn't entertain any changes, whether they're allowed under the code now or not.
Why wouldn't we entertain those that are currently allowed under the code and not include them in the moratorium?
Well, when the Planning Commission heard this item, they raised a number of issues, a number of them that haven't been explicitly dealt with in the code. And in order to make sure that we deal with those issues, whether they're allowed now or not, the Planning Commission felt that, you know, this, this planning effort needed to take place. And there are many issues that are interwoven, public safety, security, things like this, parking. And unless we deal with this in a comprehensive manner, staff feels that, you know, there, there might be something that slips through, gets grandfathered in, and then new regulations are put into place that directly contradict something that was just approved.
Okay, I appreciate that answer. And I'm not sure I like that fact, though. I think if something's currently allowed, it wouldn't, unless somebody's asking for multiple changes, one of which is allowed and several are not allowed, you know, then I would agree. But if it's just a matter of increasing hours, and it's currently allowed, I think it's kind of unfair to those businesses to, to not consider their application.
Well, the hours aren't, the increase in hours isn't permitted under the code by right. It's permitted under a CUP, and exactly how, how long of extension of hours is something that we don't know what the appropriate amount of time is. And that's something that we need to analyze.
No, that's fair. If that needs cleaning up as well, then, then I think that's fair. This is temporary for 45 days?
Temporary for 45 days.
Is that sufficient time to have this come forward, or do you anticipate it will have to be extended?
Staff has made considerable progress on this, on this matter, but most likely, we can, we feel that we probably need to extend this.
It'd be nice to have a goal not to. I mean, if it needs to, we'll consider it certainly.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I see no one else in the queue, so at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, do we have any speakers on this matter? We do not. So, at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn it over to council discussion. Is there any discussion? Vice Mayor Edwards.
Echoing Councilmember Carmichael, moratoriums are something that we do not take lightly in the city, because we want to encourage businesses to come here. But in a case where we don't have a fixed set of guidelines, we don't want to approve any businesses until we establish those guidelines. So, we want to be consistent. So, in that case, I will support knowing that it's only 45 days.
Thank you. Councilmember Ron.
Yeah, thanks. I, you know, I agree. I think the, the opportunity here is for us to take a little bit of a breath and identify the opportunities, also provide, I think, a balanced and fair platform for this emerging growth market. But, you know, from, from my perspective, one of the things I'd like to make sure, and I know staff has already been dealing with this, is that there's confidence that the standards of Temecula's quality of life are taken into consideration in this evaluation, right? So, it's not just about, you know, business as usual, but there are some, both positive and potentially some very negative implications from certain types of businesses. And so, I think that's an important component of this, and so I'd imagine that folks are going to be working closely with public safety as well, knowing what we know about existing businesses in the city and, and learning some lessons. And I appreciate the fact that you're reaching out and looking at other cities as well, because, you know, they've all gone through similar growing pains. And so, hopefully, there's some model solutions out there that we can, we can look toward.
Thank you. And then I'll just offer my, my two cents, maybe putting it in more plain language, how I view it, is I agree and concur with my colleagues. Microbreweries, they're, they're proliferating, and that's, that's wonderful in some cases. They're, they're occurring in areas where it's less expensive to occur in the city, primarily in the industrial areas. And so, the microbreweries are, are opening. It's less expensive to do that. A lot of them are startups. That's appropriate. As time goes by, they'd like to have a tasting room. And that means there's more traffic in and out of a business park. And then, of course, that takes up more parking. Now, some of them are requesting that they stay open longer. Again, how does that impact business traffic? Some are requesting live entertainment. Again, how does that interact with the rest of a business park or a business community? And so, having a development code that's not really equipped to look at this or, or in anticipation of this, we need to take a breath and, and as everybody has said, have a look at what this means in the big picture. This is nothing more than just good planning, so that we don't have a hodgepodge that affects health, safety, and welfare. We have businesses complaining that they're being impacted by, by a microbrewery that's open all night and taking up more parking spaces than they're allowed, and on and on and on and on. Commissioner Gario, Planning Commission, that's why we have you here to listen, so I'm sure you can communicate some of the council's thoughts. Back to your commission, and of course, staff, you've heard this as well. Are there any other comments? If not, I'll take a motion to introduce the ordinance.
So moved.
So, we have a motion to introduce the ordinance by Councilmember McCracken, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, this is an interim ordinance of the city council of the city of Temecula, enacted pursuant to Government Code Section 65858, establishing a moratorium on establishment of any new or modification to an existing conditional use permit for the manufacturing of alcohol with retail sales or a tasting room in the city, declaring the urgency thereof, and making a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act.
We had a second by Councilmember Carmichael. Please cast your vote. Okay, and that passes 5 to 0. That moves us to our next item, item 14. Consider planning application number PA 15-1921, an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of planning application number PA 15-0694. A development plan application to allow for the construction of an approximately 13,907-square-foot, three-story shell building on the northeast corner of Old Town Front Street and Fourth Street. Can I have a staff report, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and other members of the council. Planning application before you this evening is an appeal to a previously approved development plan to allow for the construction of a three-story shell building. The project is generally located on the northeast corner of Old Town Front Street and Fourth Street, within the Old Town specific plan. This is a site plan that was approved at the Planning Commission. Just to orient you, here we have Old Town Front Street. This is Fourth Street, tasting alley, and this, of course, is the structure. The applicant has chosen to go with a Spanish Mission Revival architectural style. This is a view of the project if you're standing at the intersection of Old Town Front and Fourth Street. The project was brought before the Old Town Local Review Board. The board recommended approval, and then the project was brought to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission ultimately approved the project. Now, I'll discuss specifics related to the appeal. The appellant's contention is that the project should not have qualified for a categorical exemption from CEQA because it is deficient in all of the items you see before you. Staff's response is that an environmental impact report with a mitigation monitoring program was adopted as part of the Old Town specific plan revision process. The project meets all of the requirements in the revised specific plan, and all these requirements were analyzed in that EIR. Furthermore, the project contains a condition of approval requiring it to adhere to all specifications contained in the EIR and the mitigation monitoring program. Therefore, staff does not believe any further CEQA analysis is required. With regard to traffic, the EIR does not require an annual traffic study. What it does require are subsequent traffic impact analysis at a couple of intersections, but this analysis is only going to be used to, to see if roundabouts are needed at these intersections. As a side note, the city does conduct annual traffic, an annual traffic count program, and data from this program has been used to add stop signs within the Old Town area. Staff must note that the appellant provided no justification as to why the project is deficient in the areas you see here before you. With regard to parking, the appellant contends that the lack of parking for the project puts the project in direct conflict with the Parking Management Section of the Old Town specific plan. The appellant has also indicated that staff does have the authority to decide on a case-by-case basis if parking should be required for a project. Staff's response is that the Old Town specific plan does not require parking for this particular type of project. For CEQA, staff maintains that the project still should be allowed to have an infill development exemption per CEQA. And based on the information I've just presented, staff recommends that the city council uphold the Planning Commission approval and deny the appeal. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. We have the appellant here, as well as the applicant for the original development plan, if you'd like to speak with them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, any council questions of staff, questions of staff only? If you please get in the queue. Let's see. Any of my colleagues have any questions of staff? Yes, Councilmember Carmichael.
Just one. You talked about the program EIR for the Old Town specific plan. Was the project appropriately conditioned based on the necessary mitigation according to that EIR?
Yes, and as I indicated, there was even a condition of approval with the development plan stating that the applicant had to adhere to all mitigation in that EIR.
Okay, but it didn't spell out specific mitigation? It was a blanket condition?
It was, it's a blanket standard of condition, where we would go back, when, when the building plans come in, the grading plans, we'll look at the mitigation in the EIR, make sure they cross their Ts dotted their Is.
And, and that's a normal process.
That's a normal process, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, seeing no more questions. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask the applicant or the property owner to come forward and speak on this matter first. I believe, is that Mr. Wagner, Dane Wagner? If you could. You have five minutes, Mr. Wagner. You have five minutes, Mr. Wagner.
It certainly won't take that long. Thank you for the opportunity. I think it's important to realize that we spent probably the last 18 months since inception, when we purchased the property, to work with our consultants and to work with city staff to ensure that we complied with the development code. We believe that the council should approve the recommendation from staff to move forward. And we're willing to do anything we possibly can to ensure that we have and follow the guidelines of the city. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wagner. I'll ask for the appellant to come forward. I believe that's Ms. Starnes. Is that correct, Ms., Madam City Clerk?
It is.
Okay, then we'll ask the appellant to come forward. Ms. Starnes, you have five minutes. We have three listed on the, on the timer.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm here today as a small business owner in the Old Town. I've owned Fourth Street Antiques at 41975 Fourth Street now since '04. And as you probably know, businesses, especially small businesses on side streets, not on front street themselves, do struggle. But we've made it through that, and we've made it through the bad part of the recession as well. In regards to the building and going through the Old Town specific plan, it says here that it is to bring new businesses that add to those businesses currently in place, allow growth while protecting present commerce. I don't see where that's happened here. Require well-designed and well-integrated land uses by emphasizing the importance of land use compatibility and sensitivity to nearby businesses and to residential uses within. Again, I, I don't see where that happened. Recognize the importance of adequate parking facilities in Old Town to support the mix of residential and commercial land uses and varying, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on, that's terrible, varying areas of development. And then through park, though parking may not be a requirement normally, you do have the power to decide on a case-by-case basis of the individual plan. Would call for self-contained parking or other parking solutions as a means of deciding if it is indeed using the best space at the highest use potential. Added that without a plan that works effectively for that space, denial is potentially in the best interest of Old Town. Parking is very difficult, and our, our customers commented on it daily. And on a three-story building, you're going to have second and third floors that are offices and businesses of that nature, where people are going to come at 8 o'clock in the morning, they're going to park, and they're not leaving. There, there just isn't going to be any place for the people that want to go to the retail stores to park that are nearby.